Thank you.
Good evening.
It is Tuesday, June 4th, oh no, it is Tuesday, July 2nd. And this is the Town Council Regular Meeting. Madam Clerk.
You know, councilors are currently present except councillor Zupiri, and I understand he is absent out of good reasons.
Yes, he is. All right, salute to the flag. Would everyone please stand? And Mr. Zagami, would you lead us in a salute to the flag, please? We're over here.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councillor Obray was willing to sing for us. All right, recognitions, awards, and memorials. And this evening we have two proclamations that were read for the eighth grade promotions at Cutler and Westside. So councillor Baumgartner, 2019, 452, please. Cutler Arts and Humanities.
Proclamation recognizing Cutler Arts and Humanities Magnet School Class of 2019. Whereas 146 eighth graders students, eighth grade students at Cutler Arts and Humanities Magnet School have successfully completed educational requirements in order to be promoted. And whereas the class of 2019 filled Cutler with a blend of children from all corners of the world, and many were promoted from S.B. Butler, Northeast Academy, Claude Chester, and Kelnaski Elementary Schools. And whereas the year of their births marked milestones such as the planet Pluto's demotion to dwarf planet, Nintendo released the Wii Gaming Console. Luciano Pavarotti gave his last public performance at the 20 Winter Olympics in Turin, Italy. And whereas the class of 2019 is a group of kind, caring, thoughtful young people who look out for each other and their teachers, and who actively work to make their school and community a better place to live. And whereas Cutler Arts and Humanities Magnet School will be honoring the class of 2019 at the promotion ceremony on June 18th, 2019, at Fitch Senior High School Auditorium. Now therefore be it resolved that the Groton Town Council does hereby congratulate the Cutler Arts and Humanities Magnet School Class of 2019 on a job well done dated at Groton, Connecticut, this 18th day of June 2019, and signed by Mayor of Tewa, Grotten, Retrisse Granatowsky.
Thank you. 2019, 453, Westside STEM Magnet School Class of 2019. Councillor Parker.
Proclamation recognizing Westside STEM Magnet School Class of 2019. Whereas 137 eighth grade students at Westside STEM Magnet School have successfully completed educational requirements in order to be promoted. And whereas the class of 2019 filled Westside with a blend of children from all corners of the world, and many were promoted from S.B. Butler, Northeast Academy, Claude Chester, and Kelnaski Elementary Schools. And whereas the year of their births marked milestones such as the planet Pluto's demotion to dwarf planet, Nintendo released the Wii Gaming Console, and Luciano Pavarotti gave his last public performance at the 20 Winter Olympics in Turin, Italy. And whereas the class... Whereas the class of 2019 is a group of kind, caring, and thoughtful young people who look out for each other and their teachers, and who actively work to make their school and community a better place to live. And whereas the Westside STEM Magnet School will be honoring the class of 2019 at the promotion ceremony on June 14th, 2019, at Fitch Senior High School. Now therefore be it resolved that the Groton Town Council does hereby congratulate the Westside STEM Magnet School Class of 2019 on a job well done dated at Groton, Connecticut, this 14th day of June 2019, signed by Mayor of the Town of Groton, Retrisse Granatowsky.
Thank you, Councillor Parker. Okay, we are on to Roman numeral four, public hearings. This is 2019, 32, 2 TIF master plan downtown Route 1, public hearing. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. I'll read the call. Not my package. Nice.
It is on page...
Nice, well, it's not mine.
Page eight.
I'll borrow yours. Notice of Public Hearing, Town of Groton, July 2nd, 2019. The Town Council will hold a public hearing on the Town of Groton, Connecticut tax increment financing for the downtown Groton TIF District Master Plan on July 2nd, 2019 at 6:30 PM at Community Room, Town Council Annex 134 Groton Long Point Road, Groton, Connecticut to review and discuss the following. The establishment of a TIF district and the adoption of the resolution authorizing creation of the downtown Groton Tax Increment Financing District and adopting a downtown Groton Tax Increment Financing District Plan for the district. The proposed downtown Groton TIF district includes 145.05 acres located on both sides of the Pecanic Road and Long Hill Road, which is also U.S. Route 1, from Buddington Road to Sunnyside Park. It is bounded on the south of the, by the Amtrak rail line, and on the north boundaries, generally following the downtown development district, the DDD. And office multi, and office multi, multiple family, that's considered OMF, zone lines, which are specifically depicted in the proposed downtown Groton Tax Increment Financing District Master Plan. All interested persons may be heard, and written communications may be received at the public hearing. Copies of the resolution and the downtown TIF, excuse me, downtown tax increment financing district master plan are available for the public inspection during normal business hours at the Groton Town Clerk's Office, in the Town Hall, and the Office of Planning and Development Services at the Town Hall Annex, and on the Town Groton's website, www.groton-ct.gov. This is dated Groton, Connecticut, the 21st day of June 2019, by yours truly.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Reiner is here this evening to give us a brief overview, and then we'll go to the public hearing portion.
John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. Just want to give a very brief overview. Tax increment financing is an economic development tool. It's something that we use as part of our larger economic development program. We had adopted a TIF tax increment financing policy back in January of 2019. That set the framework for all future tax increment financing districts or master plan areas that we plan in the town. That first district, as the Town Clerk had just read the advertisement, is the downtown district. Other districts will be moving forward in the, in the future. We've been working on one with the City of Groton and Thames, five corners. This district can grow in the future, but we started as one size, and as depicted in the master plan and the map there, as well as the future projects that we have outlined. I always do like to say, every time we talk about tax increment financing, this is not a new tax, it's not a new fee. It's something where we would utilize an increment of future taxes on projects that haven't yet been built, and it's not a given that someone can utilize tax increment financing. There's a number of requirements that they have to adhere to, minimum thresholds, et cetera. A couple of very minor points I just want to bring to the attention of the council. Since the last draft that you've seen of the tax increment financing master plan, there will be two changes that we'll be making in it. One is just updating the latest mill rate, reflecting where we are after we just adopted this year's budget. And also since the last time before we scheduled this public hearing, since then, the town has changed the TIF Advisory Committee from a different kind of temporary standing committee to the Economic Development Commission. So those two changes will be reflected in the final draft after the, the public hearing and any other comments that we have. Happy to answer any questions on this. We've talked about tax increment financing at length over the past probably three years.
Do any of the councilors have questions for Mr. Reiner before we begin the public portion? Councillor Heed.
Just a quick clarification. If you're a property owner and you have a tax increment financing for, say, 30 years, what happens if you go and sell a property?
So, in order for someone to utilize tax increment financing, they have to work with the town and do something called a credit enhancement agreement. They can only do that if, at a minimum, they're spending a million dollars, not just buying the property, but improvements on the, the project. And they actually have to show that the TIF is needed for that project of what they're going to be doing, and it meets a number of other thresholds. If someone were to sell that property, if they had a 10-year or 20-year credit enhancement agreement, the way that the master plan and the policy are written now is those credit enhancement agreements would be extinguished at the time of the sale. That doesn't mean that the buyer could not negotiate something with the town at that time, but if you're selling the property, that agreement is between the town and that existing property owner.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
Thanks.
Seeing no further questions. We have one citizen signed up to speak for the public hearing. Gretchen Chipparini, please.
Gretchen Chipparini, 87, Phoenix Drive. I'm totally unprepared. I didn't know this was going on until I signed up. I'm ready for the next part. I'm not opposed to TIF, but I am opposed to making districts. There's no requirement by the state of Connecticut that you have to divide this town into areas and make them TIF districts. I don't see why it can't be on a first come, first served basis. I did a study, you're going to be seeing in my next show, that shows that the area of Groton, I did it from the Ledgerd border down to this area you're talking about, and then I did another, what they contribute, those areas to the grand list. And then from that end, sort of where the Charles, the Sharp Highway is, down to here, essentially. And then I did Mystic. And I got this from Mary. Mary and I worked on it. And number one, who contributes to the grand list, is from Ledgerd border down to the beginning of this. Number two is this area. Number three is Mystic. So you've got to decide as a council what's more important, to get some successes under your belt, or to, or to delve out districts. I, I don't believe that's important. And there is a limit. It's a percentage of your, John knows this better than I, but of the grand list, I believe. You can't just, it's just not unlimited. So, the highest area for probability excess is, and there's a reason, I've said this to this council before, is traffic density is number one. That's what all retail businesses look at, and accessibility to a major highway. And downtown Groton, Chris Reagan will tell you differently, does not have it, okay? Retailers are not going to be overly interested. I don't care about TIF or not. And if the project fails, TIF is a disaster. So I don't want the public out there to think that TIF is, is some kind of magic here. It's not. Matter of fact, we're sort of in, I understand, if you don't do it, then nothing will happen. I, I, I understand that part, and I think that part's good about it. But don't think it's a magic bullet that all of a sudden people are going to come running because there's TIF. I think you should choose, if you're going to choose, you should check, at least initially, choose the areas that have the most chances for success to attractive to business. And downtown Groton is not that. Matter of fact, I believe it goes number one, north of, what's near the highway, anything near the highway that has sewage, that has utilities. Then I think Mystic's number two, and number three may be this downtown area. So I don't think it makes any bit of sense. And 117, which I know they've looked at, but they've taken it away, has no chance of success because there's no traffic there. I've driven more developers than you think by that property out there, and not, they all laugh, say, forget it, nobody will go there. So I don't see why it can't be on a first come, serve, first served basis. Just give it to, and if it's not a good project, these guys will say, no, it's not a good project, don't do it, don't give them TIF. And why do we have to divide? And it becomes a political toy, too, and I don't like that. I, I think it should be taken on its merits, and why shouldn't anybody, any area, be, you know, be, be acceptable as a TIF area? So that's my view on TIF. I think it's good, TIF, but I think you should rethink the whole premise of TIF, of how you delve it out. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no one else signed up to speak for the public hearing on the TIF master plan? Is there anyone else here in the public that would like to speak on this particular issue? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing at 6:47. So we are to Roman numeral five, receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. This is the portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens. To address the council, please sign this sheet on the table at the front of the room, which I have up here. When you are recognized, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town councilors will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation, and can respond during the responses to citizens' petitions portion of the meeting. Okay, I have one person signed up to speak, and that's Ms. Chipparini.
Hello again. Gretchen Chipparini, 87, Phoenix Drive. Commercial property with a water view and visibility to a major highway like I-95 is a rare and valued asset. Groton has only one such property, William Sealy School. Most towns can only dream of having such an asset, thus it should never be squandered on a project that does nothing to act as a beacon for future investment. I understand you're going to be into executive session tonight, discuss what John Reiner proposed, or from an apartment developer from New Haven. New London made the largest mistake in its history by placing only apartments on its most valuable property with also a viewer of the verve and substantial acreage. Well, that unwitness decision, they succeeded in turning New London to a crime-ridden city. In my childhood, New London was a beautiful and grand city with excellent retail and restaurant on its main street. The demise happened when they made the terrible decision to have apartments only built on their best property with river views. It is well-known in real estate that densely populated apartments alone, unless they are on Park Avenue in New York City, with high rental rates, most often deteriorate and turn into inner-city centers of crime. They never get better because renters are hard on a place and they do not, that they do not own. The council, Gorman and York, is only interested in their fee, and John Reiner should not be interested in quick success and sell for mediocrity for this gem of a property for the appearance of short-term success at the cost of long-term disaster. Mixed use does not deteriorate as rapidly and markedly as apartment complexes because of the businesses, medical centers, or restaurants, and them care more than someone who is running an apartment because they have an image to uphold, which is needed to get customers to walk through the front door. I don't care what level apartment starts at, in my expert residential experience, it will deteriorate, and also whether they become loaded with lots of kids, which will all, we all know, cost a town money. The degrade happens because apartments need a growing, continuous maintenance investment, which few developers are committed to. Once they start deteriorating, they get sold to our lower-level owner, who is not so committed to the high cost of continuous management. At least the mixed use, the commercial tenants slow this degrade down, and condos are much better because owners care. A while back, when the William School neighborhood showed up in number at the zone change hearing from residential to commercial, it was repeated by John Reiner that when we have a mixed-use zone, that is what we want to go on this property. Also Susan Southern, the Chair of the Zoning Commission, said that she hopes that the which the neighborhood will be respected and listened to. I see no effort in that direction because your regional broker appears to not be successful in finding a mixed-use developer. I have seen the development that this new apartment developer has done. I have not, I'm not thrilled. They look like glorified barracks with the same central boxes and different finishes put on the outside on each project. Some people call these Brady Bunch builders because everything they do looks the same with no architectural diversity or interest. You will not track great tenants interested within these uninteresting buildings. They will turn into slum in a short time, not something that Groton needs or wants. However, when that happens, I predict the town employees responsible for it will be long gone. This will, this council will have changed, and the remaining residents as in New London will be stuck with the long-term mess that has been created. It's much faster to create a mess than to undo a mess. We already have 2100 units across the street at Belford Beatty in the same situation. So sarcastic, let's just add a bunch more and make Groton more of a mediocre bedroom community. Groton is at a crossroads, and unlike most property in Groton, you have control of this unique and high-potential property, and can determine its future as a major building block in Groton's recovery. You can either head towards more junk, like presently being built down on Route 12, or across the street from the Town Hall, or have some patience and get it represented by a national broker, and get better quality product in here that is a destination site that attracts outsiders to spend their money here by taking advantage of the William Sealy School's properties, river view, size, highway visibility, and ideal location between New York and Boston. The council, as the owner of William Sealy School property, has leverage, so use it, instead of giving it in every time an employer or developer threatens to leave. Threats are a strategy of negotiation or often not real. It is better to leave a key property empty and have patience to get a highly visible project that will be the seed for future growth than to do a project that has a high probability to drag Groton down further. We have plenty of those already in Groton. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no one else signed up to speak under citizens' petition. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come up and speak? Are you going to speak as a citizen?
I'm speaking on behalf of the citizens.
Oh, thank you very much, I forgot. Yes. Could you...
Yeah, there's a, Mrs. Warren, I don't have her address, but I will include that in the minutes.
What is her first name, please?
Cynthia.
Cynthia Warren, thank you.
Warren, S.Y.N.T.H.A. And this was a letter that she had written and delivered to a public hearing on June 18th regarding planning and zoning in Stonington. And so she wanted this to be heard. She said, "When I heard the names Smiler's Wharf, I asked myself, who's smiling? Smiler's Wharf is going to degrade the character of town and the quality of life of its residents, especially those of us whose memories of Mystic are long and deep. I come from a family that goes back five generations here, more than 125 years of continuous residence and contribution. My great-grandfather, Moses Crane, came over on a boat from Scotland. He settled here and had a blacksmith shop on a dock on Water Street across from the Daniel Packard Inn. Two of his sons, William and Charles Craig, became builders of houses here, not sea captains' houses, but modest Cape houses for working-class people to raise a family. Their houses can be found on both sides of Mystic. Charles Craig's house is on 8 Godfrey Street and bears a historic plaque. My mother was born in the house on 44 Church Street on the Stonington side, and she died in our own grammar school, now Academy, Academy Point Assisted Living on Groton's side. My grandfather died in the house at 21 Godfrey Street, a house my grandfather built. Four generations of Craigs are buried in both sides of Mystic. When I was a kid, my extended family on both sides of the river, but all of us only briefly walked from downtown Mystic where we could buy anything we needed. We all said that we were from Mystic, not Stonington or Groton. My grandmother worked at the Velvet Mill. My mother's cousin's daughter of Charles Craig was an executive secretary at the Mystic Seaport. My aunt was a bookkeeper at Mystic Shipyard. Extended family and close family friends worked as laborers at Post Boatyard, now owned by Mystic Seaport, or Seaport Marine. My uncle shaked his, slacked his thirst at John's Bar, now demolished for a parking lot. My house in Mystic has been continuously occupied by a family member for 61 years. We have roots in longevity. I know the authentic Mystic from 50 years ago, before tourists got its grips. Downtown was Main Street, USA. Businesses were locally owned. There was no Mystic brand, which means it had not been corporatized. And it was largely working class. Its downtown met all the daily needs and now meets none. Even my bank is gone. Who's smiling? Not me. This project is not going to profit or benefit me. Tourism and development in Mystic had made my quality of life go steadily down. A traffic nightmare already exists, and my house is one of the most severely impacted. Route 1 runs along its side. In the summer, traffic backs up for the bridge once an hour from morning till evening, right next to my house. They keep their motors idling, throw garbage on my yard, blast music. I can't keep my windows open on the north side or enjoy sitting on my porch. I wear earplugs in the house. I didn't like it. It didn't, I didn't use, it didn't used to be like this. Who's smiling? We have reached the tipping point, unlike those in the tourist gold rush, who claim this project is just for, the spark for an explosion to develop the shoreline. I call for a moratorium on projects like Smiler's Wharf and, and positive model of sustainable tourism that will preserve the original character of Mystic as a quaint, historic New England village where residents matter as much as tourists. Mystic is already overdeveloped. The woods continue to disappear at an alarming rate. The town is being corporatized and urbanized, tall buildings, hardened river fronts, bright lights, incessant traffic, redundant shopping, and, and fetish, the fetishized, oh boy, fetishized drawbridge, heavy delivery trucks, and with power brakes, noise, especially noise from custom motorcycle mufflers and hot rod engines that roar up Baptist Hill and pass my house. Baptist Hill has become a racetrack for those living near, idling on Stonington's side of the bridge. Who's smiling? Mystic is already overdeveloped. The planners know, the planners, town organizers know it, constantly racking their brains for where to put more cars, and just look at the proliferation of signs down here in the heart of the village, the mother lode of the gold rush. There are many signs that you don't, you don't know which way to turn. This is tourism in overdrive. The frenzy is just a gold rush. It's, it's egotistic. It's, Groton's country doesn't exist. It's a fictional, is fictional as Shangri-La. If this is the, such a paradise, why do they want to pave it for more parking? Why do they want to destroy the character and threaten its environment? Their development model is not sustainable. I ask why the authorities can ignore violations of regulations at a whim. Residents are concerned that Smiler's Wharf housing will be placed for rent on Airbnb, but they can't depend on the authorities to enforce Stonington, Zonington regulations against short-term rentals because the town has not been doing so for years, according to the report. Wire privilege extended arbitrarily. It seems overfloor parking for Smiler's Wharf will be allowed elsewhere with a shuttle connection, but the same privilege was denied to the Coogan Farm, according to the news. At the April 17th meeting, many people were in favor, do not live in Mystic. Clearly, people in Stonington Borough or Pocatick will not be impacted by the negative effects of the project. We who actually live in Mystic are the ones who will, whether it be on Groton or Stonington side of the river, and clearly people with businesses will benefit more than us, of us who are not business people. They will, they will, the will of the residents on both sides of the Mystic River should come to bear heavily on this decision. We who live on the Groton side of Mystic itself, I repeat, in Mystic, will be the, be just as affected as those in Stonington's side. I live one block above Water Street at High Street and Route 1. I believe Groton should have an equal say in the fate of this project. Finally, I have the rhetorical use to make this sound like a great public benefit is misleading. This is a private project for private gain, and the use of state taxpayers' funds is a jumpstart it. When it is known that the previous project, by the same principle, ended with creditors unpaid, is absolutely an affront to honest citizens. There it is.
Thank you. So it's a resident of Groton who wrote the letter, but she was dealing mainly with the Smiler's Wharf project, and she's at the corner of High Street and Route 1. I don't have the house number.
I can, I can get the house number.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other citizens? Seeing none, we are on to Roman numeral six, responses to citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. Are there any councilors who'd like to respond? And then I'll yield my time, so someone else can respond as well. Councillor Heed.
I would like to thank Gretchen Chipparini for speaking today, but I'll respectfully disagree. We've set up a process with a, that consists of a task force with town staff, Gorman and York, and two councilors, myself and councillor Obray. We vigorously interview and challenge the developers that have applied for the RFP at the Sealy School. And the one that we've chosen, or that I would like us to choose anyways, has the resources, the experience, and the vision to follow through to create a truly landmark facility, a residence that you don't see in, outside of big cities. This is going, going to be a really, it's landmark, so I'd say give it a chance.
Councillor Baumgartner.
Gretchen, thank you for coming out. I, you know, I'd like to align my remarks with councillor Heed, though I must say, traffic, traffic density does not drive development. People do. One day cars will be autonomous and will be able to get around without humans actually having to drive them. And it's the car, obviously, you know, we don't have grocery stores for, for those vehicles. We haven't because of people. And so, if, like how you said, mixed-use development, you know, that has people living in the apartments or town homes above head with storefronts at, you know, at the ground level, that kind of development, you know, drives development. And so, you know, the TIF district will enable that kind of development, and I'd love to talk more about it on your show sometime soon. So I hope you'll extend that invitation to me sometime so we can talk more in depth. And then in terms of the Smiler's Wharf, I know that's been an issue that has been very hot right now, especially in the newspaper. I'll be attending that public hearing. You know, I know it's, it's not a Groton issue per se, but it certainly could impact Groton as well in many respects. as well in many respects. So I think that'll be in July, or July's now upon us, but I think next week. So that's all. Thanks for everyone for coming out.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. You had someone who wanted to present some information to us?
Yeah, that's fine.
We're fine? Okay. Anyone else? Any other councilors? Counselor Aubrey?
I'd just say, Gretchen, in the search that we've been doing under the guidance over our planning department and our economic development, we have really talked to some people that are Class A developers. I think it's time we take Groton up a step. I do agree with you with that. And I feel that that's what we're really looking at. And when we get a little further along and we're able to announce a few things, I think you're going to be very pleased. So it's time to raise the bar for Groton. We need to be a better town and offer what people are really looking for in today's world.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no further responses, we are on to Rome numeral seven, consent calendar. And I believe we are on Counselor Franco.
They resolve that the minutes of the town council meeting on June 4, 2019 are hereby accepted and approved.
Moved by Franco, seconded by Parker. Is there any discussion on the minutes of the June 4 meeting? I approve Rita. I have one. On page 85, they spelled Counselor Franco's name wrong. So it's under Rome numeral 10-8. Just a typo. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none. All those in favor of accepting the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? So it's eight. We also need to move the special trust fund contribution. So Counselor Hede, do you want to do that one, please?
Resolution accepting contributions to... Resolution accepting contributions to special trust funds, resolve that the town council hereby accepts contributions to the town as follows. Denise Weiner, $54, any to read them out, right?
I don't know. We normally do it in one motion. I think you're fine. So moved by Hede, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Parker. Any discussion on accepting the special trust fund? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the contribution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? So moved unanimously, thank you. We are on to communications and report. Town councilors, Counselor Baumgartner?
Nothing to report.
Counselor Parker?
Since I missed the last meeting, so I have a little bit. The SEC TV fifth anniversary, West Side and Cutler's promotion ceremonies, Catherine Kanowski's dare graduation, Adult Edge graduation, TVCC annual meeting. I want to thank all the ones that did awards, and they do have a new theme out, that kindness matters. So do one turn, then someone else do a turn. I went to a hearing Youth Voices presentations regarding school climate, and I went to the New London NAACP Freedom Fund Dinner.
Thank you. Counselor Franco?
We have the beautification committee, and we are moving along. And I believe, coming up shortly, we're going to be asking some key stakeholders in town to come to a meeting and maybe mark out some areas that they believe are in need. And probably in August, we're looking to do a community meeting where we ask the whole public to come out and have their input on where areas of Groton they think are in greatest need.
Thank you. Counselor Hede?
Last night I attended the Conservation Commission, and there were two things I wanted to report out on real quick. The first thing is, previous week, we had a joint town and city council meeting, and SCAR came out and did a presentation to us on trash, you know, waste removal, not removal, but disposal and recycling. And SCAR, they invited SCAR to discuss the idea of the composting facility. So they are going to be sending a memo to us or a letter requesting our direction and support to help them partner with other town agencies and look for a property within Groton that we could set up a facility, or where they could set up a facility. And they went through, like, all science behind it. It was pretty fascinating. And then the second thing is, we discussed the public education component to plastic ordinance, and they came up with five points to consider. So they'll be looking for something on environmental impact, recyclers versus alternatives such as reusable bags. The public health involves economic impact and what is not, what is in the ordinance versus what is not in the ordinance. So I sent an email to the mayor and the town manager requesting that we put on the cowl next week, a little discussion item where we could give the town staff some direction on where they want to go with an ordinance, because in order to have public education, you have to have at least a draft ordinance with draft ideas. So that'll be next week.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Aubrey?
I attended one of the planning and zoning meetings last week. It was very interesting, a lot going on. I also attended the beautification committee meeting, which we're finally getting a grasp on things and moving forward a little bit, which is great. I also want to mention, just a little bit back, I attended the Marine Science Magnet School graduation. And I can't remember for sure if it was 63 or 68 students that graduated, but every one of them is going on to school. And I think that is such an accomplishment for a school here in Groton. So I think it needs to be noted.
Thank you. Counselor Atwater?
No report.
Counselor Schmidt?
No report.
Thank you. Just want to remind everybody, we have the Fourth of July Parade coming up on the Fourth of July. Really? Yes, we do. I wanted to let you know that there is a woman from the Census Bureau that's been reaching out to the town and would like us to work together with her to do public outreach, to encourage everyone to complete the census, the 2020 census. I wanted to let Counselor Franco and Counselor Aubrey know that there's a young man, actually one of my students, who is doing an Eagle Scout project at Birch Plain Creek, and he's going to be doing some trail things and some beautification. And normally, when you do an Eagle Scout project, part of his job, Diego's job, will be to reach out into the community and get people to help him. So I will give him the name of you two, and then perhaps you can work with him. He's a good kid, and he wants to do some good things for the town, so it's very nice. And I just wanted to say kudos to Economic Development staff. They did a social media post that went off the charts. They asked what people want in the town of Groton, and it just ballooned, and someone took it and they put it on the Stonington forum. We had people from Stonington, we had people from Waterford. Everybody wants a Trader Joe's. So we'll see. They're willing to take their information with them when they go and visit developers in Boston, I guess, for a show or an economic development conference up there. Clerk of the representative town meeting?
Thank you, Madam... Madam... I almost did it again. Moderator. Jeez. Mayor. So the RTM's next meeting is scheduled for the 10th, but it's canceled because there is no business. The caucus for the third district met last night, and they did elect Mrs. Rush to take the vacancy, so that's been completed.
Thank you. Clerk of the council?
Just to let you know that we, as of July 1, well, in our office, it was July 2, we are no longer issuing sporting licenses with the old terminal system. I do have on our website all of our information on this nifty little flyer that I put out. So we're still able to do it, but the idea is to encourage people to use their home computers to print, to purchase and print. It's really... It's diminishing the town clerk's role. It's efficient the way we're doing it, but it's not meant for us. It's meant for home use. So also, what was the other great thing? Oh, dog licenses. We've been... We're not up to where we were last year, which is less than the year before and the year before that. We're dwindling. In short, we're dwindling. I'm going to suggest that our legislature sponsor a bill to require all veterinarian services to have on their paperwork the information that it's a law required all dogs over the age of six months be registered with each town. It's the only way to do it. They're just not getting the information, and they're confused. I think, I can't blame a citizen, when you get a tag from the veterinarian with the rabies, you think your dog's licensed. It has a number and everything, so I think that's the only way to get there.
Good, very good. Thank you. Town manager?
Good evening. Me is... I, as well as several members of the Groton Sale Foundation, and Chad Frost, the architect for the Groton Sale Foundation, met with Department of Transportation staff on Friday to look at the library site in person, go over the process for potentially purchasing the property. Very good meeting, excellent. They seemed very open. We've got some definitive steps and timelines, and it was very productive. The next step is, I've got to submit the official request. I've got that prepared, other than I need just a couple of changes on the map to put with it that Chad's doing. And then we'll submit that and kick off the process. So that... Bob Zagami and I, you know, we've been working for a while on the changes for new employees for non-union retirement. Bob Zagami and I are meeting with the attorney tomorrow. She's getting close, and she needs a little bit of input on some last few changes, but hopefully we'll have something soon for you. We've been working on it. And then I met with Dr. Gannier the other day. One of the things we discussed was Pleasant Valley School. He said, "For the things that could be cleaned up by staff, things that didn't have mold or anything else," he had staff clean out things, throw things away. But he's also hired a company to come in with, you know, the full suits and just be safe and clean out everything else. So good progress on that.
Good. I forgot to mention, we're going to have the first meeting of the group of us that are going to come up with a draft to bring back to the council on the excess school property process. So hopefully we'll have something within the next month or two, as we're going to have more buildings coming offline. Any department heads that wish to speak? Mr. Zagami, no? Okay. Committee reports. I don't have anything for committee to hold. There are no temporary rules. Personnel appointment, Chairman Hede?
We do not have a meeting, so no report.
And rules, Chairman Hede?
No report.
Okay, very good. So we're on to Rome numeral 10, new business, 10-8.
Can I ask?
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's all. I just wanted to ask, are we doing the reviews that we are supposed to be doing with our retirees on a regular basis?
Well, they're already laid out. Each union contract's laid out what we need to do. And we're making sure, what we're making sure we do is that we reach out to them every other year as per the contracts. It's not actually required for us to reach out, but it's on my calendar to do that. We received a request from one retirement group the other day. There's a process right in that union contract that I believe, I believe Bob and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that we have to meet with the union to discuss and see if we can come up with an agreement first. And barring that, then each, both, the town will present something, the staff will present something to the council for recommendation, and the union would present something, recommendation for the town council to make a decision on.
That's for the retired?
Well, that's for the first request we got. Each union contract is slightly different. It's per the contracts. But the retiree colas?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's laid out in the contracts. Yes, we will follow the contracts.
Thank you.
All right. We are on to 2019 through 261, update on excess property redevelopment. And Counselor Aubrey, would you please read this?
Motion for executive session. I hear, but I move that the members of the town council committee of the whole, town manager John Burke, assistant town manager Bob Zagami, planning director John Reiner, assistant planning director Deb Jones, Rob Monteschi, and Mike Gorman go into executive session pursuant to general statutes, section 1-200, parentheses 6, parentheses D, for the discussion of the selection of a site or the lease sale or purchase of real estate by the state or a political subdivision of the state concerning purchase and development of the former Sealy School property.
I so move.
Second.
Moved by Aubrey and seconded by Atwater. All those in favor of going into executive session as per the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are in executive session at 7:17. Seven, we are on to item Rome numeral 10B, 2019, 178-2, Groton Heights School redevelopment. Thayer Mahan, letter of intent, sorry. And we are on page 89. Counselor Atwater, please.
This item was approved at the committee of the whole meeting on June 11, 2019. Resolution to approve letter of intent with Thayer Mahan for the redevelopment of the former Groton Heights School property. Whereas Thayer Mahan submitted a proposal for the Groton Heights School redevelopment project as part of a public procurement process, RFP 18-49, advertised by the town of Groton on June 28, 2018, to include the redevelopment of the land and the existing vacant school building currently owned by the town at 224 Monument Street. And whereas interviews were conducted with interested developers, and Thayer Mahan was ultimately selected for the project since they best addressed the RFP criteria, including project approach, team qualification, and experiences, project viability and ability to execute the project in a timely manner and benefit to town, including financial offering. And whereas Thayer Mahan's proposal states, quote, "Our purpose, our proposal for Groton Heights is the next step in our growth and development and will further promote Groton as an innovation center for marine robotics and undersea technologies," end quote. And whereas Thayer Mahan had conducted several public outreach project meetings and has collaborated with several local partners, including the town of Groton, city of Groton, Bill Memorial Library, and the Naval and Marine Consortium. And whereas the town of Groton has successfully completed discussions with Thayer Mahan regarding terms and conditions for the sale and redevelopment of the former Groton Heights School. And whereas the town of Groton has demonstrated support for this proposal but desires to formalize approval through this letter of intent, thereby allowing the project implementation to begin, now therefore be it resolved that the town council hereby approves the letter of intent between the town and Thayer Mahan demonstrating support for this redevelopment project. I so move.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Atwater and seconded by Hede. Any discussion on this item? Just to, for the viewing public, this item and the next three have all been discussed in committee of the whole. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of 2019, 178, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? So moved unanimously, 8-0-0. We are on to 2019, 385, one, preventing financial exploitation of older adults grant program on page 90. Counselor Schmidt, please.
The item was approved at the committee of the whole meeting on June 11, 2019. Resolution authorizing the town manager to enter an agreement for National Council on Aging Grant on behalf of the town of Groton. Whereas the National Council on Aging Funds are available to host a preventing financial exploitation of older adults program. And whereas the Groton Senior Center was eligible to apply for these funds because it is nationally accredited and was selected to receive these funds, now therefore be it resolved that the town manager may accept the funds and execute all such reports and certifications as may hereafter be required as a condition of receiving this grant. I so move.
Second. Moved by Schmidt and seconded by Atwater. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2019-385, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? So moved unanimously, 8-0-0. Item Rome numeral 10D, 2019, 397, one, Division of Statewide Emergency Telecommunications DSET Capital Expense Grant, on page 91. Counselor Baumgartner, please.
Resolution authorizing Division of Statewide Emergency Telecommunications, DSET Capital Expense Grant. Whereas the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Statewide Emergency Telecommunications, DSET, Capital Expense Grant is for durable goods, information technology, or related services. And whereas funding is being requested to offset the cost of the approved capital improvement project... to offset the cost of the approved capital improvement project, CIP, to purchase and implement NextGen as the new Integrated Computer Aided Dispatch CAD Records Management System, RMS, for emergency dispatching and police records management. The utilization of an integrated system will enhance productivity, accuracy, and public safety by having data collected in one platform, which will integrate with other systems in use by police, fire, EMS throughout town and beyond. NextGen is a software suite in wide use by Connecticut Public Safety Agencies, and whereas the grant provided, provides $20,139 for this project, which will offset the costs of the CIP already approved, with the funding in place, with no required town match for this grant. Now therefore be it resolved that Town Manager John Burt may apply for, execute, and accept the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Statewide Emergency Telecommunications, DSET, DSET Capital Expense Grant, with an anticipated total amount of $20,139. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Franco. Is there discussion on this item? I just want to say I'm pleased that we are moving to the Integrated CAD and RMS, and thanks staff for pursuing the grants to help defray the cost. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. And Room Numeral 10E, 2019, 398, 1, Pfizer Grant Music Therapy Program, on Page 92. Counselor Parker, please.
Resolution authorizing the town manager to enter agreement for a Pfizer grant on behalf of the town of Groton. Whereas Pfizer has funding for programs that revitalize our communities, as well as support for local civic and cultural institutions. And whereas, the Groton Senior Center was eligible to apply for and was selected to receive these funds, now therefore be it resolved that the town manager may accept the funds and execute all such reports and certifications as may here and after be required as a condition of receiving this grant. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Parker and seconded by Schmidt. Is there any discussion on the music therapy grant? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are done with all the new business. Do any of the councilors have other business, or does the manager have any other business that you wanted to bring before us?
I have one thing I want to...
Counselor Obray?
If you have an opportunity, I don't know if it plays again or not, but if you really want to see the damage that a referendum can do in a town, if you watch the program that was on for spring, they've not been able to get their taxes agreed to. And I was watching it the other night, and it's just awful what it's doing to that town. Their library's down to 10 hours, their senior center is diminishing. The only people they have on the public works now are the ones that do the plowing. I mean, it is really a sad, sad situation, and that's what a referendum can do to a town. So if you have a chance, watch the, is it Selectman Olson? What's her title? I'm not sure.
Austin.
Austin, thank you. I mean, you know, it was just brutal.
And what was the referendum about?
Their budget.
The budget.
And they don't have one yet, and they keep telling her to cut, and there's nothing left to cut.
Any other business? Counselor Parker?
I just want to recognize Mr. Carter from Groton Adult Edge. I did receive their letter, and I did have a wonderful time, and thank you for the invitation again.
All right. Seeing no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
So moved.
Moved by Baumgartner, is there a second? Seconded by Hede. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are adjourned at 8:37. Thank you. Happy Fourth.